I have more commissioners at this time, I'll call the meeting order. Adam Clark, we have four of them. So next, I'll recognize Commissioner Bridges, who's going to lead us in our, give tonight's invocation and lead us into the pledge.
Agent salute pledge, I pledge allegiance to the flag. To the republic which is safe, one nation, indivi-. Let's pray. Our gracious heavenly father, we thank you for this day and all the many blessings you've given to us, father. We appreciate the wonderful weather we've had in our county the last few weeks and the rain you've given for our crops, Lord. I just pray, Father, for the people around the world who are working to keep us safe and our first responders, all our employees, Father. It's just such an honor to serve and to just pray that as we go into this meeting, we, everything would be said and done, be within your will. We ask in Jesus' name, amen.
Next, I'd like to take the opportunity to recognize any elected officials we have present. Next, it's a pleasure to recognize any veteran present.
I'm just going to raise my hand.
Dick Spall is the governor for United States Navy.
Dick Scott, United States Navy.
Mr. Duney, FTS Army. Does everyone have one of our pens?
Thank you, guys. Next, recognize any law enforcement present. Thank you, guys. And last but not least, we recognize any county department heads.
Could he handle health care, prevent Johnson from touching her business?
But they go back and work on the election. Dick Spall is the governor. Oh, we invited.
Daniel or Big Rich Franklin.
Oliver, David.
All right, thank you, guys, as well. All right, commissioners, before you use your agenda, the first item will be to adopt the agenda. So with that, I entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second. Second. I'll have a motion second, all of our people say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Next is the consent agenda. We all have been provided the items on the consent agenda in our packet. We all have all had opportunity to review those. So with that, at this time, entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, both of you. Adopt the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? I hear none, all of our people say aye. Anybody opposed? All right. Now, we're down to the regular agenda. The first item we have, the only item we have tonight is the county manager's budget presentation fiscal year ending 2026. So this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Cox, Dave.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. Have a brief presentation for you and the community at large. So what we are here to present, like the chairman read the title, is our balanced budget for the upcoming fiscal year, 25, 26 budget year. And it's certainly my privilege to be the one to present a revenue-neutral fiscal year 25, 26 proposed budget for your consideration. Introduction of what we're going to be discussing, it's everything from the budget process, going to briefly cover that, all the way through and down to the few remaining next steps. So the Local Government Budget Fiscal Control Act, I think, really represents the statutory framework for every local government in North Carolina. This is, these are the guardrails that we have to operate within when developing the budget. And the next tier down from that framework is really, I think, arguably the most important component of that. That's the board's guidance and direction. So through your guidance and sage advice, we did establish the vision and the priority for the upcoming fiscal year's budget. And as your budget officer, I worked with my budget team and all of the department's office and agency directors to implement the board's vision and priorities through this balanced budget that we'll be discussing. And I think another key point is right here. The external funded agencies, I think stewardship of the taxpayers' money is a top priority for this board. And I think one really shining example of that is this external funded agencies. And what I mean by that is we, the board has seen the value over the years of partnering with these not-for-profits, these other governmental or quasi-governmental agencies that operate within the community that provide services where we may have a gap in service or where it may just not be in our wheelhouse. A couple of examples for you are the, I'm sorry, the TAC and the Washington Street Outreach Ministries. You know, those are two services that we don't provide, but you see the value in those. And we're leveraging and we're being good, I think, really being good stewards of the taxpayer's money by leveraging a partner and providing that service through them. Our values as an organization, everything from high performance and I really want to dig in a little bit into the teamwork and the integrity and the innovation. I think we've really come a long way. High performance is certainly something that we strive for. We are a service-oriented organization. We don't make anything. We are a service provider. And the focus of every service provider really should be your customer service. And I think we really do an exceptional job there. And that begins and ends with the resources, the tools and the training that the board provides us to be able to provide those services. Teamwork is another thing. I think you have seen through the years, a lot of innovation and a lot of cross-departmental pollination of ideas and getting the job done for our community. Next are some of the top priorities that you have established for us. One is continuing the Cleveland County Schools, that partnership, funding them. They are a cornerstone of the success that we'll achieve well into the future. Also, in terms of long-range plan, investing in our capital and our public safety strategic plan. I think those are two really key items that are going to set us apart from our contemporaries, not just in the region, but statewide. And then community wellness, making sure that the community overall has the best opportunity to have the resources necessary to be a healthy and have a meaningful life in terms of just community, all the way down to the individual citizen. And then being an employer of choice, and I'll dig into that just a little bit more in the next slide. But being an employer of choice, to me, means folks look to Cleveland County as the organization that they want to work for. And we have really made, I think, great strides in that venue to set ourselves apart as an employer of choice. Some of the highlights within the actual budget, what you'll see here, and this is specifically in terms of our revenues, our ad valorem taxes, we're looking at just over 59 or right at 59.6 million, which does reflect a $1.5 million or a 2.5% decrease or less than our current year's budget. Local option sales tax, we're projecting about a 3% increase over current year's budget. Permits and fees, right here, that's a $3 million increase, and that's 220%. And being a citizen, not knowing anything other than these percentages, I'd want to know a little bit more about that. So this $3 million is almost dollar-for-dollar tied to the Two Kings Casino Project. We are going to see a large push in their construction and tied to the permits and fees. So we'll see a spike this year, and then it'll tail back off to previous year's funding level. So it's a one-time temporary spike for that specific $1 billion project. And also in investments earnings, we're looking at about $2 million less than current year. And this is something that we did anticipate. We are planning for it. We do have our own large construction project in the Justice Center. We had over $100 million sitting in reserves specifically earmarked for that project. And we have been drawing down those funds. So as you would expect, our investments on earnings are going to be less going into next year. And then all other revenue sources, we're going to see minimal changes, plus or minus 1%. Now, digging into the ad valorem property tax or ad valorem taxes. We did have a revaluation this year. And currently, our tax rate is 68 and 3/4 per $100. And the proposed 25, 26 in total is 54 and 1/2 cents per $100 valuation. And that is a delta or the difference of 14 and 1/4 pennies less. And how this breaks down a little bit further, so for the county, current year is 54 and 3/4 and projecting that we would go to 40 and 1/2 cents. And then this direct support for public schools, approximately 10 cents or a little over, well, right at $10 million from the general fund goes directly to support our local school system on top of the 14 cent tax rate that they, we levy on their behalf, that goes directly to the school system. So that leaves current year just 44 and 3/4 cents for all other 27 departments, offices and agencies, as well as all the other externally funded agencies have to be funded with this amount. Next year, proposing again the 40 and 1/2 cents, which is 3 cents under revenue neutral, based on the revaluation of the upcoming year, that equates, that 10 million equates to 3 and 1/2 pennies. So we have 37 cents to fund all other services outside of education. Drilling down again into the public school system, so you have 14 cents on the tax rate. The equivalent of 10 cents equates to about 24 cents of the total levy goes to support the school system. Next year, it's proposed to be 17 and 1/2 cents. So the number here, this 54.5 cents is revenue neutral for the county. I did say that this is 3 cents under revenue neutral, but I am proposing that the public schools be held at 14 cents, which is right at 3 pennies over revenue neutral, but it all comes out in the wash at 54 and 1/2 cents. For the fire district, which is a standalone taxing district, they are currently at 8 and 3/4 of a penny, recommending that they go to 7 cents flat. This is a snapshot of our ad valorem, our tax base, our tax rate and the value of a penny as it has changed since 2022 to current year and projecting for fiscal year 26. So in '22, the value of a penny was right at $1 million. Going into next year, we're estimating that it'll be about 1.47 or 1.5 million. So where do the revenues come from? The vast majority of the revenues come from two main sources, that being our ad valorem and our sales tax. They comprise 75% of all the revenue that the county takes in each year, which is two big pots of money that we're relying on to come in and fund our operations. Another slide that I like to present to the public is also our program and funding mandates. Before any North Carolina county begins their budget process, in our case, it's 81%. It varies, it could be 75 to the mid 80s. But most counties are in this 80, 81% of all services that we provide either fall into those two categories. Program mandates with funding mandates, the prime example is debt service. If you're going to borrow money for project A, you will set aside the debt service to satisfy that obligation each year. And then the program mandates discretionary funding. The state, through the general statute, tells counties, you will provide these services, but it's up to you, individual county, as to the level of the funding, the school system, social services, the sheriff's office. You will provide these services, but it's up to you to determine the funding level. Which, for us, that only leaves 19 cents, I'm sorry, 19% for truly discretionary services and discretionary funding. And most of those are your quality-of-life services. That'd be libraries. I know we don't provide parks and recreation necessarily, but those are two of the examples that I generally tend to point to. Now, where does the money go? Really goes in support of three main functional categories. That's public safety, education and human services. That comprises 63 and 1/2% of all of our expenses and expenditures go in support of public safety. That's our sheriff's office, EMS, emergency management, E911. You know, education, of course, is the school system and the community college. And human services is our health and social services. Some of the highlights, do like to point this out as illustratively as a point of reference. So before we started balancing the budget, the unedited, just straight requests from all departments, offices and agencies and externally funded agencies, that was 141 million. Our current fiscal year is just at 113 and 1/2 million. For next year, I'm recommending 111.34 million, which is 30 million less or 27% less than what was asked for. And I think more importantly, it is 2.15 or almost 2% less than our current year funding. So we're revenue neutral and recommending a budget that is 2 million less than our current. And these are general fund numbers. All funds inclusive are 240 million. So that includes our solid waste and special funds for social services and the like that make up that 100, correction, 240 million. A few more of the highlights, we are continuing forward with the inherent overtime funding that the commissioners did, of course, fund that last year. Some of the personnel recommendations, talking about him being an employer of choice. I think that comes with strategic investment, the training and credentialing and the recruitment and retention. I think with those three, we can really make great strides to further our efforts in being an employer of choice. And the commissioners have invested in us, in the staff to achieve that. Overall, there were 30 positions requested. I am recommending funding eight of those positions. One is the fire inspector. The other is the housekeeper custodian. That is, those are six individual positions. We are recommending that we bring the external or the contracted services in-house starting next year. And then the voting system technician, you know, move that from a part-time to a full-time. The current year, I am recommending that we make it permanent full-time moving forward. So those are the eight positions that I'm recommending being funded out of in next year's budget. Just a last few highlights. Follow our level funding plan and what that means for some of our larger departments. We are recommending setting aside a specific dollar amount, identify a dollar amount, and then have the individual office or department director identify the priorities. You know, if it's vehicles or if it's equipment, what have you, they will make those decisions. Because honestly, we just couldn't fund it all. Also, with the information technology and the radio system replacement plan, equipment replacement plan, vehicle replacement plan, continuing to invest in those assets, I think is really paying dividends. Another quick snapshot of our educational support, so for the school system, the overall total, and this is the same as our current year at the 35 million. That includes the teacher supplement, the annual capital, our debt service and the current or operating expense for them. Cleveland Community College, that does reflect the board's commitment and direction for increasing their overall operating or current expense funding by $250,000 annually for five years. And this would be year three of five to fund that at that amount. And last, I was talking about the investment and being a good steward of the taxpayers' money. This is, we're leveraging 1.9 million. And just ballparking, that parlay's into all of those services that these individual organizations provide into the tens, if not hundreds of millions that they're providing for this community. And, you know, through the commissioner's stewardship and the wisdom and honestly seeing the partnership potential there with our, with our community partners, I think we're really demonstrating the bang for the buck, so to speak, or the return on investment. All right, moving on to our enterprise fund, we have one. It is the solid waste, recommending that we continue the fee structure adjustments following what our engineers put in place for us. And another highlight, you'll see that enterprise fund recommending a 9. roughly $8 million increase. And the really driver there is we need to build a new MSW or municipal solid waste cell. We need to build cell four. And 9.5 of that 9.8 million is tied up in building that new cell. So this will be one of those anomalies. We'll have a capital outlay funded through the solid waste, not supported at all by the general fund. And then it will drop back down to previous year's totals. So next steps. Of course, right here, we're at the budget presentation. I'm requesting a call to a public hearing to be set for June 3rd. And that would allow the budget ordinance to be available for the board's consideration anytime after the public hearing. And last couple of details, the budget message, budget details, budget ordinance will be available in the court to the board's office, all of our county library branches, and of course, online on the county's website for public inspection. Now that it's been formally presented to the board, we will go live with that immediately tomorrow morning. Give folks as much time as possible to review it in advance of the public hearing. And that's everything I have.
Thank you, David.
Yes, sir.
What questions does the board have? Let's start here with Deb and go to the end. Deb, do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions. I just say thank you for all the hard work and all the people that helped to put it together.
Same thing here, Don, don't have any questions. They really worked hard and bring the cost down.
Yes, sir.
I can just echo what they said. It's, I know you and the team have spent hundreds and hundreds of hours putting this together and really appreciate you being able to get it to revenue neutral and still be able to give our employees a raise and no cutting services to our citizens and just appreciate all the hard work.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Again, with Echo, thank you for all the hard work for everyone that's been involved. And I do think a good job has been done. And we have gone over this with great fine detail and will continue to do so, I'm sure, for a number of days yet. But thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. Again, echo what everybody else has said. Thank you to your staff, Philip. Those, all department heads has had a large part to play in this. I know we talked many times to try to get questions answered for myself and the rest of the board members as well. So before we, before I explain the next steps, I take the motion, I would like to remind those in the audience, those that are watching and those that may watch later in the week, that this budget document will be available here at the admin building tomorrow, at the county libraries tomorrow, and will also be available on the website. Also, the public hearing, if the board approves here in the second, will be held on June 3rd, which, and that step is a required step under North Carolina general statutes to continue the process. So there will be plenty of opportunity for the citizens to review the budget, ask any questions that they may have, get it to the commissioners or the county staff. And then they're also welcome to attend and comment at the public hearing on June 3rd at 6:00 PM here in the commissioners' chambers. With that, board members, we do, the managers presented our fiscal year ending 26 budget. We all have the budget document. Next step for us is to call, to set the public hearing, which he's called for. So with that, I will entertain a motion to set the FY ending 26 budget public hearing, which is required by North Carolina general statutes for June 3rd, 6:00 PM here at the commissioners' chambers.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, follow the discussion. I hear none, all of our people say aye. Anyone opposed? All right, David, if you guys get that posted and notify out to everybody, publish wherever it needs to go as well. All right, we have one more item and then a closed session. So we do have one board appointment tonight. This is the Cleveland Volunteer Fire Department Relief Fund. Every fire department in North Carolina, if they choose to participate, and all fire officers in Cleveland County participated in this, they have what's known as a relief fund board. Statutes that regulate that are found in Article 58, Article 84 of Article 58, Article 84 of Chapter 58 of North Carolina general statutes. And they have a board of directors that are appointed to specifically deal with that money. The fire department appoint two members to that, board of trustees, the county or the governing body appoints two, and then the state fire marshal appoints the fifth one. So with that, Cleveland has a vacancy, Cleveland Volunteer Fire Department has a vacancy due to a death. And they have recommended Paul Bear or Philip Paul Bear, Philip Paul Bear of Shelby to replace that vacancy that they have. I'll answer any questions if anybody has any. If not, I'll seek a motion to approve Mr. Barrett to fill the vacancy for the Cleveland Volunteer Fire Department Relief Fund Board.
Make the motion that we approve.
We have a motion second, any discussion? Hear none, all of our people say aye. Anybody opposed? All right, thank you for that. Next, we have a closed session. There's two items tonight. So let's walk through this. Jonathan, help me if you need to. So first of all, we're going to go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina general statute 143, 318, 11A3 to consult with the attorney employed or retained by public body in order to preserve attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body with privilege as hereby acknowledged. The public body may consider and give instruction to the attorney concerning the handling or settlement of a claim, judicial action, mediation, arbitration or administrative procedure. Do you need to say?
You did great.
All right, so, and then one closed session, we're also going to deal with the second item. And that one is to same statute, but it's A6 instead of A3, is to consider the qualifications, competency, performance, character, fitness, condition of performance or conditions of an disperformance of an individual public officer or employee, or prospective public officer or employee, are to hear or investigate a complaint, charge or grievance by against an individual public area or employee. With those two statutes quoted, do I have a motion in a closed session?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All of our people say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, board, round the board, we're in closed session and we're going to retreat to the conference.
All right, feel like the record show everybody's back during closed session, the board been there. The board voted to return open session during closed session, the board took action under one forty-three, three eighteen eleven eight three by giving direction to the attorney dealing with the case of a pending case and under one forty-three, three eighteen eleven eight six, uh, the board, uh, conducted the annual review of the clerk to the board and the board authorized increase in the clerk's salary to ninety-four thousand dollars annually. With that, we're end of our agenda. Uh, commissioners got anything to report? I'd like to remind everyone that still may be watching or sees this later that, uh, again, the next meeting is on June third, uh, June third, twenty twenty-five at six P M. And during that meeting, we'll also hold a public hearing on the county's fiscal year ending twenty-sixth. But with that, I entertain motion to adjourn.
Send move.
Is there a second? All in favor say ah.
Ah.
That both. All right, we're adjourned.